Looks like somebody pulled the plug too soon. That Rambo guy is on the loose again.
Shit.
Roger, this is Trapper. We're setting up roadblocks on Highway 26.
Senator Chipman, Representative Williams, esteemed members of the Joint Standing Committee on Transportation. My name is Jim Libby. I'm a state senator representing Senate District 22 comprised of the towns of Naples, Sebago, Baldwin, Standish and Cumberland County, Hiram and Porter in Oxford County, Limington, Limerick, Cornish, Parsonsville, Newfield, Acton, Shapley and the county of York. It's my honor to bring to you the attention of the contents of LD 369, an act to allow repurposed military vehicles to be registered and operated on main roads. This year, many of my constituents and yours were shocked to learn that they could not re-register their vehicles that were former military vehicles. This outcome appears to have come from legislation passed in the previous legislature. I've taken the time to travel to parts of the state to learn as much as I could about these vehicles. Believe it or not, I found great joy and been actually in awe of the hundreds of ways that former military vehicles are being used by private citizens for both personal and even public uses. Special thanks goes to Sam Gilpatrick. He's a captain of the Cornish Fire Department. He spent hundreds of hours putting together testimony, information packets like the packet that you have. There was a lot more, but I didn't, I didn't print it all off, but you have a good chunk of it. And he also coordinated people across the state who own military vehicles. I hope you've read his testimony, which was submitted earlier, and that you've come to understand the importance of these vehicles. After all the research I've done, I, I find it terrible that the state would nullify the property of hundreds of Maine citizens in the name of public safety, when in fact, these vehicles are safely operated on the roads or had been. And they've been used in recovery efforts far and wide. The best way to provide the committee information is to offer some excerpts from citizens' feedback from around the state. And boy, did I receive some on this, a lot. There's a lot of people that, I, I had no idea, to be honest with you, that there were this many people who use the equipment to run their businesses, who make it a hobby to put together these vehicles and maintain them and, and many other purposes. So here is a, a letter from Daryl Frazier. I picked this one out because I thought it was technically probably something that you wanted to, to hear. It might help you the most. I picked three, the, the other two are a little bit shorter. My name is Daryl Fisher. I'm a lifelong resident of Maine and Damerscota. I've spent the last 26 years of my life in the automotive repair industry. I'm currently an ASE master technician, and I've held a Maine state inspection license for the majority of those years. I'm also a military vehicle owner and enthusiast. I'm writing in regard to the registration and operation of retired military vehicles in civilian and municipal ownership in the state of Maine. Retired military vehicles have played an important role in private, commercial and municipal use, largely in the beginning of the post-war period, when US military, when the US military unloaded tens of thousands of vehicles into the civilian market. There, they found a steady stream of buyers due to their affordability, their capabilities and their records of reliability. These facts have not changed. Military vehicles are still revered for their value and robust nature. Their commercial applications are endless as they are, as their all-terrain capabilities and heavy-duty components lend themselves to a wide variety of tasks. They've been used in construction, recovery, tourism, agriculture, energy and more. These vehicles have allowed businesses, large and small, affordable and more often than not, superior alternatives to commercial equipment for decades. And one must not forget their contribution to municipalities, large and small. Military vehicles have been and continue to be employed successfully in fire departments and EMA services, not only in Maine, but nationwide. It's rare to find a fire department in Maine that has not had a military vehicle in its stables. Their capabilities lend themselves to off-road and high-water rescue with ease. This is what they were built for. Much of the debate around civilian ownership and operation of the military vehicles revolves around their safety and relationship to federal motor vehicle safety standards. While it's true that the Department of Defense is exempt from these standards, it does not mean they don't adhere to them. Below is a quote taken from Mil STD 1180B, Safety Standards for Military Ground Vehicles. Although vehicles and equipment manufactured for and sold directly to the armed services of the United States in conformity with contractual specifications are specifically exempted from the provisions of the federal motor vehicle safety standards, it is established, it is the established policy of the Army to comply with the intent of those standards as long as the compliance does not degrade essential military characteristics. With the same limitation, compliance with applicable provisions of the federal motor carrier safety regulations is an Army requirement. This military standard provides guidance to assure proper safety characteristics associated with FMVSS and are designed into military vehicles with a consistent manner. In establishing this standard, full consideration has given, has been given to the following constraint listed in order of precedence. A, military mission requirements. B, federal motor safety standard and motor carrier safety regulations. And C, requirements of friendly nations within US borders, within, whose borders US vehicles are operated by the DoD personnel. Further reading of 1180B will reveal that much of the safety standards developed and used by our military are based off parallel FMVSS standards. Military vehicle owners and operators will attest to their overbuilt nature. Robust braking systems, severe duty steering and suspension components, and heavy-duty electrical and lighting designed for tactical duty translate into vehicles that can serve in civilian roles safely and reliably for decades. EPA standards also come for discussion when considering on-road use of military vehicles. While it is true that US military vehicles are exempt from the US EPA standards, this is a case of much debate. In order to streamline logistics, our US military sources, driveline components from numerous civilian contractors such as International, Navistar, Cummins, Detroit, Caterpillar, Allison, Continental, Teledyne, Rockwell and General Motors. The engines and driveline components found in civilian-owned military vehicles are often the same components found in civilian commercial vehicles that carry EPA certifications. Title, excuse me, MRSA Title 29A states, "Off-road vehicles may not be registered in accordance with this title. Vehicles owned and operated by government entities are not subject to the provisions of this section." The title is referenced for reuse and/or revoke registration of facility, excuse me, civilian-owned military vehicles. However, military vehicles that are released to civilian ownership are most often accompanied by an SF97 certificate to obtain title. If the intent is for off-road use only, these will be explicitly marked for off-road use only. The intent of a normal unmarked SF97 is for the holder to obtain a proper title with which to register and operate the vehicle. An often overlooked area of repurposed military vehicles is the economic impact. Besides their affordability, there's considerable network of parts and service dealers nationwide. These vendors, large and small, rely on the continued use of military vehicles post-mission for their livelihoods. Some of these vendors have been servicing the industry since the immediate post-war period. They distribute the multitude of surplus parts produced for the military for these vehicles. This group also includes vendors who have found their niche in producing decals, canvas items, wiring and hard-to-find reproduction parts. These are small businesses that rely solely on the availability and continued use of surplus military vehicles. On a more subjective note, I'd like to comment on the hobby of military vehicle ownership. This is a hobby with a considerable following, not just in Maine, but worldwide. Those of us who own military vehicles, whether for personal use or commercial, often consider ourselves stewards of history. These vehicles have served men and women of our military faithfully, and we take our role in their retirement seriously. It's truly a labor of love. We spend countless hours and untold dollars in their maintenance and upkeep to make sure that their usefulness continues post-mission. These vehicles are tangible representations of the best in American engineering, design, manufacturing and logistics. And many of us feel it is our duty to faithfully ensure their continued use. Their presence in parades, car shows, touch-a-truck events and grocery store parking lots are almost always met with smiles, waves from the interactions with veterans and active-duty service members. These meetings fuel our desire to continually collect and operate these living history exhibits. To simplify, it's a rewarding hobby that is beneficial to many. And that was from Daryl Frazier. Two more very, much shorter. Stephen McLean provides more evidence. He writes, "I am a licensed used car and truck dealer and equipment dealer, also a truck and museum, uh, equipment museum owner, as well as a 40-plus-year volunteer fire department member. There is no reason repurposed military vehicles should not be able to be titled or registered for on-road use. These vehicles must meet or exceed federal standards for highway safety as well as EPA standards when using on-road diesel fuel." The braking system on these vehicles is double what the common commercial truck on the road uses. The statement that these military vehicles are unsafe for the roads is ludicrous. The state of Maine goes on to say that municipalities are exempt, and that makes no sense either. If they are unsafe, which they are not, to be on the road, how can it be safe for emergency use by fire and police departments who are running to emergency calls at an accelerated speed? I've sold many of these vehicles to cities, towns, contractors, farmers, et cetera, for uses like snow plowing, sanding, water tanks, wreckers, ramp trucks, dump trucks, et cetera. From the testimony, you can see these repurposed military vehicles are far safer than the common commercial vehicle traveling our roads. And that was from SA McLean Incorporated. The last one, Tim Cook writes, and this was more of a passionate letter. "If ex-military vehicles are not allowed to be registered and operated in main highways, including those over 10,000 pounds, then the state has just put me out of business, along with the associated revenues. We operate a 1990 M936 wrecker recovery truck that has been called for and used by just about every law enforcement agency in my area. My small company does not have $125,000 to $250,000 to replace this vehicle, not to mention the myriad of logging companies, fire departments, rural towns and others that utilize these vehicles. I am vehemently opposed to any legislation suggesting, suggestion or verbiage that will not allow use of these vehicles in any weight class. Anyone who suggests these vehicles are not safe probably hasn't been involved with them. All we're meeting prevailing federal standards for the time period in which they were manufactured." All right, so that's, thanks for your patience. And I'm, I'm going to finish up and clear the way for others to testify. But before I do, I just want you to please understand that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people whose lives are put into the maintaining of these vehicles and they need them to operate on the roads and they want them to operate on the roads. And I think they're right. And I think a lot of them are surprised when they're showing up at town hall and not able to register these vehicles. So I, I think it's, it's, it's up to this committee to take another look at this law that was passed, I believe in the last legislature, and think through it and, you know, is this really the way we want to treat these people? They're going to be out a significant amount of money, a lot of resources, a lot of time, a labor of love. I think they deserve to be able to register these vehicles. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. For any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the last guy mentioned about the upper-level vehicles, in your bill, it only goes up to 10,000.
Yeah.
So.
Could be better. Could be better. That, that was a constituent bill. It's the way we wrote it, but you know, the committee can obviously amend it.
What, what vehicles for military would be under 10,000? Maybe Hummers?
Not the ones that, a lot of the ones that I viewed, yeah, Jeeps and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to ask a question? This witness? Thank you. Do we have anyone else in favor who would like to offer testimony?
I'm not very good at this, so I don't kind of suck at it, but yeah, I bought mine in New Hampshire.
Could you please state your name?
I'm sorry, it's Hank Gagnon. I bought mine in New Hampshire.
And where, where are you from?
Oh, sorry, it's Stanishme. And I bought mine in New Hampshire, not knowing I couldn't register it. Get to the town, can't register it. It's not, there's a ton of different military vehicles out there that were registered when I was looking at them in Maine illegally, not illegally, however it worked. So I didn't know any better. So now I've invested a bunch of money in a vehicle that I can't restore, more resell in Maine. And then I was also finding it hard to believe that the fire departments have all these vehicles, which goes back to the Maine State Inspection Law. If they don't meet the NTSB rulings of the air of the vehicle, how does a fire department have a legal inspection sticker on these vehicles? If they're saying they don't meet the ruling of the air. One of my local towns has the same truck as I do. It's currently registered municipality, which I understand that's no avoid, but it does have a Maine State Safety Inspection, which I don't believe municipalities have any ruling of they're exempt from any of these safety standards of the vehicle. And there's multiple ones, Bridgins got them, they run them as Hummers as PDs in Friarburg, there's multiple of the towns that have these fire trucks on the road. As Senator Libby said, they're going to fire calls, they're under high-stress situations in snow or whatever, and now my vehicle is not safe for the road because I own it just because I'm not a municipality. So that part I don't understand. So that's about what I have.
Would anyone like to ask a question of this individual? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Line up. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Elwood Edgely from Dover, Foxcroft, Maine. And I also bought.
Excuse me, sir.
Sure. I bought a vehicle first the year. It actually was a Stewart Stevenson M1078. It's a four-wheel vehicle. And the reason I turned to this type of a vehicle is that everybody knows that I have, I have a snowplow business and I had to update a plow vehicle. And, you know, 550, you can have $100,000 tied to it pretty quick. So I looked towards this, not knowing, and I purchased it from a dealer. And so I registered it, got through the process at the town in Dover. And then in about eight days, I get a letter from the state giving me so much time to send the plates back in because it's unsafe. So that afternoon, I went up to our fire station. And I've been on the board of selectmen up there for 27 years. And we just happened to have the state loan us a Hemet tank truck, ex-military vehicle. So I went there and it's got a plate on it. And it's inspected. So I called the state and I said, geez, I don't understand why I can't register this. And he told me they're unsafe. So I, I mentioned the fact that the forestry, forestry department from the state of Maine, they, I believe they have four of them that they use. So I said, are they safe for them to use? And he said, yes. So I said, I don't understand why it's not safe for me to use. And he says, well, we don't think they meet the standards, the federal motor vehicle standards. And that basically was the end of that discussion. So he says, oh, you have to comment to me that I felt was unusual, but he said, if you don't like it, you need to do something about it. So here I am. So municipalities, you said, can use them. And the state can use them. And the reason you're using them is to, to save money. That's basically most of the reason why anyone, you would repurpose this truck unless you're just a, you know, an enthusiast that likes restoring them. I was trying to do it so that I wouldn't have to increase my cost on snow plowing and plow the school up there. It was one way to do that. So I started reading a lot of information on the Stewart and Stevenson. And I actually found the specs that the army sent to the Stewart and Stevenson that they put out to several companies, actually. And in part of that, I actually read where they went back to Stewart and Stevenson before they would award them the contract. They wanted them to adhere to current federal standards as well as EPA standards of that time before they could get the contract. And it just, it seemed odd to me. I, I've got a 93 truck International that I completely rebuilt. It has less safety features than this Stewart Stevenson has. But I can register that no problem and use it. You know, you've got the inspection process. And I just wish they, they would reconsider this so that, you know, it's just a way to save money and to repurpose these vehicles that our tax dollars bought. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for this speaker? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to recognize that you've been sitting over there for probably two hours plus, and I appreciate you coming up here and testifying.
Well, I appreciate you hearing me go through the process here.
So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone?
Anyone else who would like to testify on this matter? Okay. Anyone who is neither here, no, what are we against? Anyone in opposition? I was looking at you. I just couldn't quite get the words out.
Mr. Buzz, yeah, I want to give it.
Representative Williams and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Transportation. My name is Lieutenant Bruce Scott. I'm the commander of the Traffic Safety Unit. And I'm here to testify on behalf of the Department of Public Safety and the Maine State Police in opposition to LD 369. This bill aims to allow any demilitarized vehicle under 10,001 pounds to be registered and operated in a public way without any regard to the adherence of the federal motor vehicle safety standards. And it's a DOT crash testing or the EPA pollutant requirements. Some military vehicles are specifically designed for off-road use only, and they're not safe to introduce into the main roads. Many military vehicles are much heavier and less nimble than their civilian counterparts. They're often slower, they're purpose-built for combat. They don't have some of the same important safety systems like airbags, supplemental restraint systems, anti-lock brakes or stability control. They often have tires that are designed for traversing rugged terrain that are not DOT compliant for roadway use. These vehicles are well-suited for battle and disaster relief, so they are currently allowed to be operated in a public way if they are owned or operated by government entities like military and law enforcement agencies. The limited use of these vehicles for emergency operations by specially-trained personnel mitigates the risk to the public, but to allow them to be operated by anyone for any purpose would certainly lead to unsafe conditions for other road users. The uniqueness of these vehicles that helps them absorb impacts and prevents blasts from intruding into the passenger compartment in combat situations creates disadvantages in maneuverability and crash worthiness. According to the Government Accountability Office, there have been 3,753 tactical vehicle accidents in non-combat apparition, operations in the United States from 2010 to 2019. Of these, there were at least 123 deaths to our service members. Nearly a third of these crashes involved the Humvee platform. 25% of those crashes were rollovers, and due to the limited overhead clearance and the lack of other safety features, many military members struck their heads on the steel roofs of these vehicles, causing significant head trauma and at times death. It should also be mentioned that when these military vehicles are involved in collisions with civilian vehicles, the results can be catastrophic for the passengers in both of the vehicles. Many of these vehicles are structurally superior to other vehicles on the road, meaning they become lethal weapons that can cause significant damage and/or injuries without sustaining much of any damage to that vehicle itself. Statistically, it would appear as though you're almost 10 times more likely to die in a crash involving a military vehicle than in other forms of transportation. And I would point out again that these vehicles are exempt for the government and municipal operations for law enforcement. And I would also say that this is not a new standard. This, this is similar to the last bill where it's been in effect for over 10 years. Vehicles that were improperly registered perhaps are now being sought or found, and maybe that's why there's more people lining up. But I will say, there are a lot of military vehicles built to meet federal motor vehicle safety standards. Those are legal for the road. It's the ones that aren't, but this bill opens it up for any, regardless of what it is. If it's under 10,000 pounds, then that's our concern. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lieutenant Scott, so the ones that, like the gentleman that just testified, his vehicle does meet the federal motor vehicle safety standards, but he can't register his vehicle, why?
If it meets the federal motor vehicle safety standards, he, he can, as far as I know. Happy to take a look at that and work with people that have that particular example because what we're hearing is specific vehicles that have specific standards. But these bills are being created to allow for any. But if there truly is a motor vehicle that meets the federal motor vehicle safety standards, it doesn't matter if it used to be a military vehicle or not. Those are legal. They're 100% legal to be registered in the state of Maine right now and operated.
Do all the vehicles owned by municipalities and by the state and by other governmental agencies, do those all pass the federal motor vehicle safety standards?
No, Representative Perry. So the government's exempt for the specific use. It's very limited use, it's emergency and rescue operations, it's by trained personnel. But they don't all meet the federal motor vehicle safety standards. There may be some that don't, that have been used for years for those types of tactical operations. And remembering, law enforcement is engaged in tactical operations with these vehicles as well. So the government exemption extends to law enforcement. It also extends to all the fire departments in the state of Maine. So they're not forced to take their vehicles off the road. But again, specific limited-use vehicles, and they are subject to the inspection standards, and they do go through an inspection. And in statute and in rule, they're exempted. So when you look at the, the Section 170 in the Maine Motor Vehicle Inspection Manual, it says all vehicles must have met federal motor vehicle safety standards unless otherwise exempted by law. And so they are exempted in, in this law, in 354 and 2092, and again, in, in Section 10147A.
Follow-up manager. You knew I was going to ask this question that's coming up, but in your testimony here, you talk about how they don't have some of the important safety systems like airbags, supplemental restraints, anti-lock brakes and stability control. And that's what makes them not safe, but a vehicle we heard earlier has all those, but isn't.
So again, Representative Perry, this bill is just removing that standard altogether. If there's a specific. If there's a specific vehicle that meets the standard, they're not included in the statute. They would, they would be legal to be operated in a public way.
Um. Is it? Basically, I'm thinking of the gentleman that, that testified prior and other people that have some of these vehicles that do meet the federal motor vehicle. Do we need to tighten up the language maybe? And if it's. I would think if it's legal for a. Community to register a vehicle and have it inspected. A similar exemption could be. For the use of these vehicles, like the gentleman was snow plowing. You, very limited use more versus maybe, um, the previous bill where people using them as a everyday vehicle. Is there some way that we can? Allow them in the same use category as municipalities do?
Representative Perry, I, I would put that back on the committee. I hate to do that to you, but that really has to be a decision you folks make. If you have an appetite for that and you want to expand its use, um, that's a decision you'll have to make. But it is, it is tough where the current exemptions are for specific purposes of emergencies. They're for fire and rescue. They're for those types of events. Uh, perhaps municipalities might have some out there for snow plowing as well. There, there is that possibility.
I have one. Mine.
Do you plow on the road with?
No, no, no. My town has them.
Oh, got you.
Use them for that.
So that's. So they're exempt for, for their purposes. Um, if this committee has the appetite to try to come up with some language, um, I, I, I think I might be able to.
I just think for, for the public, if. It, it's really hard for them. Like the gentleman before, when you say no, and he has the same exact vehicle that they see on the road. Every day or once a week or whatever, it doesn't make us as lawmakers or the people in charge of enforcing it. Look very good. And I'm just trying to figure a way that, that possibly we can. Thread the needle on that, but thank you.
You, you're welcome, Representative Perry. And, and I feel for the, uh, the testimonies that you've heard, and I totally understand their passion and desire. Um, I just don't know where you draw the line, and that's what makes it difficult, but certainly on, up to the committee.
Mister, Representative White, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did, do we still have an exemption for volunteer firefighters? Um, as far as licensing requirements? While responding to a fire? In the state, so, so for instance. You know, um, an up, a fireman. That is first at the station that gets in the truck and drives across the street to the fire at the school. Um, that doesn't have the class of license to operate that vehicle. Aren't they exempt from? From having that license in that instance?
So Representative White, you're talking about their commercial license?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in some circumstances they are exempt.
So. So in the rural areas of the state where most of these trucks are in municipalities. Um, quite frequently they're being operated by. People that don't even have minimum licensing requirements. But we have. One of, one of the largest volume of vet, veterans in the country in this state. And we have. People like this gentleman from Dover Foxcroft that has been operating large equipment and heavy equipment and. You know, I, I know him, he's. Owns excavators and big trucks and all, you know, has operated equipment for. Most of my life. Um, but he, he's not. Trained enough to operate one of these, but the twenty-year-old fireman that is exempt from having a licensing, having a license. Um, can jump in the truck and go put fire out.
So Representative Wade, I, I know that that exemption is predicated by an emergency, but you're a lawmaker and if you don't.
But that's there. That's there, right? I mean.
It is for urgency purposes, if that's your question.
You said twice in your. In your testimony though, that they were being operated by. You know, specially trained individuals and. You know, it's not my experience. With municipalities that have these trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions? Representative Volcano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a, there's a unit in Orono. That's not attached to the city, but they have two Humvees. It's a rescue unit. They've been heavily involved for years that I know of. And they do a lot of good. Have they been operating illegally?
I'm not familiar.
Cause they're not, they're not attached to the city. They're an entity by themselves.
It, it, it's possible, sir. I'm not familiar with it. If you had the more information, maybe I could look it up, see if the, look at the registration and then try to make that determination, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, I just wondered. Thank you. You're welcome.
Representative Roger?
I'll speak on it. However, um. I think I understood you stating. That currently. What the federal government will let go in military vehicles now meets standards? Or licensing them? Did I misunderstand that?
So Representative Albert, I think that was somebody else's testimony. I'm not familiar with that, but, but if the vehicle does meet. Federal motor vehicle safety standards, then they're not part of this bill. They would be authorized. They could be registered.
The reason for my question was not if, but. Are they now?
I.
And you're.
I, I'm not sure. I, we, we'd have to look at each vehicle individually and make that determination, but I'm not sure. You're welcome, sir.
Hey, all, it's not just you. They're all them. All right.
Oh, Ben's is working. He's not here, so.
Can I move over there? Oh, boy. So.
You can play Senate.
Yeah. Um, and I apologize as, as come up, I had to step out for, for another discussion, but. I understand in this bill, right, we're adding. Under twenty-nine, one oh one, we're adding twenty dash A, the description of a demilitarized vehicle. And then under twenty-nine A, four fifty-eight, we're adding C. With its own description, but if I look at. Four fifty-eight B custom vehicles. And it says a custom vehicle will maybe register in accordance with the provisions of this section and I read. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all the way down to number seven, which is the same exact wording as far as exemptions for inspections. Why do, why can't these vehicles be licensed? Under special, uh, under B, under custom vehicles? Why do we need a whole nother section?
So Senator Farn, I, I don't think they meet the definition of a custom auto. So, so a custom auto is, is a modified antique. And so I don't think these are modified antiques. Now I could be wrong. Some of them may meet that definition. Uh, but, but customs have to be inspected still, so they still have to meet the federal motor vehicle safety standards for the year of manufacture. Right. So if you go back into the forties, where there wasn't any standards, that changes, uh, things a little bit.
Thank you, um.
Good afternoon, Representative Williams and members of the Transportation Committee. I'm Kathy Curtis, Deputy Secretary of State for the Bureau of Motor Vehicles. And much of my, uh, first part of my testimony is very similar to what we testified to in, on LD sixty-three. And you've heard a lot about this afternoon, uh, meeting federal safety standards. Um, so I really want to focus my testimony on the difference in this particular bill. Uh, this bill allows for the registration and of a demilitarized vehicle. Upon application and evidence of the transfer title from the United States government, uh, to the registrant. And the vehicle must be, uh, affidavit indicating that the vehicle is garaged and maintained in this state. And the registration must indicate that it is a demilitarized vehicle. It also requires a secretary of state to create and issue a new license plate specifically for these vehicles in a three number, three letter combination. And to issue new plates as vanity plates. The proposal also sets a weight limit for the vehicles not to exceed ten thousand pounds and requires them to be inspected, um, except, um. For a, when granted an exception by the chief of the Maine State Police. Uh, we oppose this bill for three reasons. Number one, it requires the vehicles that are not. Manufactured for onro, on-road use to be operated on main roadways, therefore creating a potential unsafe vehicle. Traveling at speeds that may not, that it may not be designed for in weather and in road conditions that they are not meant to travel in. We must all be concerned for the safety of not only to the owner and operator of the vehicle, but for everyone else. Um, with whom they're sharing the road. Second, it requires a new plate to be issued and you, as you know, there's currently a moratorium on new plates. And third, there will be a fiscal note to create a new license plate and to modify our computer systems. To distinct computer systems to distinguish the, this vehicle as a demilitarized, I can't say that word today. Uh, vehicle on our registration documents. I provided you with a couple of pictures of the vehicles. Um, this was just a quick online search, um, looking for vehicles that were for sale. But of these concerns, our, our primary one is safety. And as you can, a, as you can see, the vehicles are manufactured with a specific purpose in mind. And again, I'm not going to go through the entire. Um, discussion about the federal motor safety standards again. But, um, we are very concerned about these vehicles having crashes on the roadways. And the damage that they can cause when meeting or crashing with a, a standard passenger vehicle. Um, additionally, we want to note that they don't adhere to federal environmental standards. And, um, there really isn't, it's very difficult to just, as you've heard today, make exceptions for one type of vehicle or another. And as, uh, the safety of main road users are of paramount importance to the department. It is for these reasons that we respectfully oppose this bill and recommend a unanimous ought not to pass from the committee. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Ms. Curtis? Yes. We're, oh, yes. Try it, but.
Thank you, Deputy Secretary, Deputy Secretary Curtis. Um, I just wanted, I'm just sort of, I'm feeling in these first two bills, kind of a consumer protection issue. Emerging from this and. I feel sympathetic to, to the safety arguments being made by the, by both departments. Um, but I'm wondering, does in instances like these? Even in our buyer beware culture, do, do we have any sort of? Recourse for consumers that find themselves in situations like this with like first the nine in the previous bill and then, um. For people, um, who bought these only to learn later. That they can't be registered in our state, uh, do. Is there anything that we do to, to help, um, make them whole or to help, um, find alternatives for them that, that, uh? Even if we're not going to give on the safety stuff, how do we, how do we help them in this, in these cases?
If they were sold by a car dealer that's licensed in the state of Maine, then we would work with the car dealer. Um, if they didn't sell the vehicle and, and, um. Provide the information that they were not, uh, that could not be registered in Maine. If it was a private sale. Um, that I, we, depending on how the sale took place, what type of agreement was written, there may be something that can be done. The vehicles purchased out of state. Um, and you know, we don't have any jurisdiction over dealers in the state of New Hampshire, for example. Now that would be really tough for us, but I think that the, you know, when there is a dispute between this, a sale of something. That there is the, um, ability for the individual to, to go to court and to try and, um. You know. Be made whole for, you know, depending on how the court rules on that.
Are there any other? Questions, comments from the? Yes.
We certainly can try, um, without being able to identify the VIN or the owner of the vehicle. It's difficult to, you know, check their records to see if there's a particular accident involving that vehicle. It's kind of like proving a negative, you know, it's hard to.
The vehicles where the. License plates were removed. Could we see if any of them had been involved in a court.
Yes, we can definitely try to do that.
If there are no more questions, yes, Representative Volcano?
Your proposal's filled with three reasons. One of them is a requirement to be placed in the issue. And as you know, there are currently moratorium on new plates. You stated it has to be a three number, three letter combination, has to be abandoned, but why?
Um, that's how the bill was written. Yes. Thank you.
We are gonna take a break so we can fix our microphone system. So we're on break now. When we adjourned, was there, were there any more questions for Deputy Commissioner Curtis? Okay. You're released. Yes, sir. No, no, the questions for the deputy commissioner. Did you have a question for the deputy? Yeah, you can ask her out in the hall. Okay.
Oh.
Oh, you missed the drama. Okay. Um, is there? Do we have any more testimony on, um, LD three sixty-nine? Against? Okay, seeing none, neither for nor against. Seeing none? Okay.
Hey.
We're closing the hearing on LD three sixty-nine.
Looks like somebody pulled the plug too soon. That Rambo guy? He's on the loose again.